Move to the middle.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our Thursday, February 22nd, Board of County Commissioners meeting. Will you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
All right, so I'd like to officially call the meeting to order. Are there any public announcements that staff would like to make?
Okay, and I would say in advance, if you see me eating a sandwich up here, please do not take offense. We've been running all day between meetings and just returned to Missoula from a funeral in Lolo, so I will try to do so discreetly. So, before we begin, is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Seeing on our current claims list, and this would reflect claims received as of February 5th, 2018, to February 15th, 2018, by the Commissioners' Office total $2,641,638.44. We have five public hearings today, and no other discussion items, but this is a good list of business, so we'll just kick things off initially. And I'd like to open up the public hearing that deals with a unlicensed wrecking yard with a staff report from Shane Ontario.
Okay. Okay, there we go. Is that good? All right, CF Auto and Fedora Chinakelo has submitted a wrecking yard application for this location, a portion of Lot 5 on DeShaw Lane subdivision number two. Here you can see where it is generally, that being the highway, this being the Y, and this is DeShaw Lane. This is a slightly closer up. This whole property is Lot 5 of DeShaw Lane number two subdivision, but what we're talking about is a lease area in this location of, according to this, which is part of the application, of 2.3 acres. The reason why we're talking about this at all is that within 30 days of getting notification from DEQ, the conditioners, the Commissioners may conduct a public hearing to determine whether the proposed facility will significantly affect the quality of life of adjoining landowners and the surrounding community. And traditionally, the Commissioners do hold hearings on wrecking yard applications. And then after that, after a public hearing or in the public hearing, adopt a resolution in either support or opposition to the location of the facility, and then send the copy of the resolution to DEQ. The state law goes on to state that DEQ may not grant a license if the Commissioners adopt a resolution opposing the location of the facility. And the state law that I'm talking about specifically is the Motor Vehicle Recycling and Disposal Act. This is the zoning. Casey can talk more about zoning if you're interested in the details, but you will see that this property is in the pink. That is considered light industrial, and Casey has said that wrecking yard is a permitted use within that zoning district. Now, the Commissioners, though, aren't just, aren't just looking at zoning. If that was the case, there would be no reason to hold a public hearing to see if the facility would affect the quality of life of adjoining landowners. And so, it's also important to look at how the facility is likely to be operated. As you have heard from public comment that you've already received, the DeShaw Lane facility, which I'm calling just because it doesn't have an address, to call it something else, is already in operation. These pictures are from June 19th, 2017. The lot already has 200 or so, more than 200 cars. These cars came from what we'll call the Long Acres Lane facility. It is northeast of the DeShaw Lane facility, and this is an overview picture of what the Long Acres lot had looked like. It was not fenced in a way that restricted public view, and so it was also never licensed. So this lot, for as long as it existed, did not comply with the Motor Vehicle Recycling and Disposal Act. When we talked with the property owner at the beginning of 2017, or near the beginning of 2017, he told us that he was having, that first of all, that he had been renting the property to Fedora Chinakelo, and that he was having them move out, or requiring them to move the vehicles off by the end of April. I show you this picture because this is what it looked like in February, and this is what it looked like in June. Notice that's June 19th. This is also what this facility looked like on June 19th, which is why we're making the assumption that the cars came from the Long Acres facility. Mr. Chinakelo and CF Auto also have a yard on Garymore Lane. It's this facility right here. This is the DeShaw Lane property, and the Long Acres property is up above here. Let me make sure that I cover everything. Whoops, that I want to cover. I think I just went backwards. There you go. So, this property began operating in 2000. It began operating without a license from the Department of Environmental Quality or, and without shielding. Once it was licensed in the early 2000s, it operated out of compliance with the wrecking yard rules, which mainly was keep the junk vehicles out of public sight, and keep the component parts out of public sight. The violations were so consistent and such a problem that in 2000, and late 2005, the Health Department recommended to DEQ that they not issue the 2006 license. DEQ spent the year of 2006 trying to get the facility to come into compliance, repeatedly asking them to submit a corrective action plan, which they never did submit. So they formally canceled the license in 2007. In 2008, DEQ fined the property, the owner of this lot, Mr. Chinakelo and CF Auto, $10,000 for not complying with the junk vehicle rules of shielding and licensing, and required that they sign, or that he sign, an order on consent, which basically said, yes, I will comply with the rules. And this was in order to avoid an administrative penalty of $182,000. So he paid $10,000, signed the order, saying yes, he would comply. But then, that was in 2008. Here is after the order. It was still in violation, even after the fine was assessed. In 2008, he did not have a license, and the Commissioners opposed reissuing the license on the basis that the operation negatively affected adjoining landowners and the surrounding community. Yeah, it's interesting to note that this is pretty much surrounded by other wrecking yards, not just other wrecking yards. There are other industrial uses there. But a big part of the problem wasn't just how it looked, but was also the fact that the way that they parked cars restricted the traffic on the roadway. So, in 2009, the Commissioners did approve, approve a resolution supporting the license at that property with the following conditions, that it would not negatively impact landowners of the community, that shielding would apply, comply with state rules, that they would not block or impede the flow of traffic through the way that they operate, that they would not place, store, or park junk vehicles or parts outside the fence, but also that they would not park or store inventory vehicles in the parking area outside the gate, or use that area in a way that would prevent customers from parking there. And this is not a great picture, but the parking area that I'm talking about is outlined by a fence right here. And so this is the area that junk vehicles and inventory vehicles and parts were not to be parked, and that the area not be used in a way that would prevent customers from parking there, because when you go, the only place to park then was just along the street. So, this resolution was adopted in June 2009, and then we have an October 2009 inspection that showed that junk vehicles were parked outside the fence and in public view. Site visits and inspections found that there were continued violations in 2011 and 2012, which you can see here. And that, this is again, the parking area, I believe. Okay. Then there were also violations in 2013 and 2014. There were violations in 2016. I don't have pictures. There's, here's some pictures from February 6, 2017, and you could see that essentially, because of how things are parked, this is down to one row, one lane. Beyond this facility is another wrecking yard facility that sometimes depends on big trucks getting through in order to deliver the vehicles one way or the other. And it's not just on Garymore that these cars are parked, but also on the neighboring street, which is Grandstand. Thank you. So this is February 26, I mean, February 6, 2017. This is February 21st, 2017. This is April 19th, 2017. This is June 19th, 2017, July, and December. Now, the important thing for you to know about December is that December was after they had already started using the facility on DeShaw Lane. And so, there is an argument to be made, hey, they are out of space. And so, is it possible that if another wrecking yard is approved, that they will operate in compliance with the law and the rules? Well, they, one thing to note is that they never did, even starting from 2000. So it's not really a facility that operated in compliance with the rules and then outgrew its facility and needs more space, so they had to park outside. It's simply been in violations for 18 years since 2000. But also, December 8th is after that other yard was open, and so they're kind of proving that the other yard is not going to take care of the problem of them parking vehicles outside the fence, whether those are junk vehicles or violating the license conditions for inventory vehicles. And here again is February 2018, that also shows, this is after the facility is opened. And this is included here because there are parts that are being stored over, literally over the fence, but above the fence as well, which is a violation of the junk vehicle, the Motor Vehicle Recycling and Disposal Act. Okay, this is located on a property. This is flipped, so you see right here, this is north, but this is DeShaw Lane, right here, and this is the outline of the property that we were looking at before with a little divot out of it. But this is the property that we're talking about right here. It's Town Home Unit 1. It's part of a Town Home Declaration process that allows them to divide the land. It's not townhome in the normal sense, or the traditional sense that we think of what a townhome is. It's actually creating industrial lots. It's a way to create industrial lots. It still has to go through sanitation review, and so we are reviewing it. The, the application shows that the fenced area is here, so it's a portion of Town Home Unit 1. Town Home Unit 1 is, here's a slightly bigger picture of it, is 7.84 acres, and right now, the lease is for 2.3 acres. My assumption, and I don't know this, is that they would come to own the entire Town Home Unit, in which case I would be concerned, especially with the way that this is shaped and the amount of roadway that it goes, that it accesses, that there would be vehicles that would be parked outside the fence and maybe along the roadway. The location, as you can see, is right at the beginning of the, what's called Two Smokes Road, I believe. And so, the other properties that access it further down the road. ...the road. So, the other thing that we have to talk about is our ability to enforce license conditions. State law and rules require that junk vehicles be shielded and that only, so be behind a fence, and that is what DEQ can help us enforce. But a junk vehicle by state law is only those vehicles, including component parts, that are discarded, ruined, wrecked, or dismantled, and not licensed, and inoperative or incapable of being driven. So there are some vehicles that are parked outside the Garymore facility, for instance, that are capable of being driven, but they look like a junk vehicle. And just the fact that something can look like a junk vehicle, but we don't know if it's a junk vehicle unless somebody goes out and tries to drive it, really complicates our ability to enforce the rules. And in addition, the license conditions that were agreed upon in 2009 talk about inventory vehicles. That is because the Commissioners were trying to find a way to approve the facility, but not have the neighboring community affected, and so not have those cars parked along the roadway, and not have the parking area taken up by vehicles regardless if they were junk vehicles or not. However, that is harder for us to enforce, because it is not clear what the enforcement mechanism is. There's some ambiguity there. It doesn't mean that we're out, we're without any recourse, but we caution you in thinking that this license could be conditioned, and that we really would have a mechanism for enforcing that. Anna Conley's here and can talk with that, if, talk to that, if you have more questions about that. So, there have been three written comments that you have had the opportunity to see. I don't know if those people are here in the audience today, but the comments that were received, there were three comments from two different parties. Each one of those comments talked, said that they feel that the unlicensed wrecking yard has negatively affected their quality of life and would negatively affect their quality of life. They both mentioned the fencing as being inadequate, and they both opposed the application. So, we are not anti-wrecking yard at the Health Department. There's definitely a need for the wrecking yards in our community, but we could not see a way to support this license, this facility at this location based on the 18 years of track record of operating outside their fence, and in a way that negatively affected the community. And so, we are recommending that the Commissioners adopt a resolution opposing the location of this facility on the basis that it will significantly affect the quality of life of adjoining landowners, and send that resolution to DEQ. Evidence shows that CF Auto will store, will dismantle, will work on both inventory cars and junk vehicle and parts in public view, and perhaps in ways that will affect traffic flow. So I do have a copy of the resolution that I can put up on the screen, if you're interested in seeing that. I know that you have seen it, so just let me know if you want that, but I'm done.
Thank you. Initial questions from the Commissioners, before we take public comment?
I was just wondering if you could read the language of the statute, just because, or if Anna could, just because it is a little bit more flexible of a statute than some as far as what our criteria for decision-making are.
Sorry, absolutely. So, it is almost verbatim to what you see here, and it is that the governing body of the county may conduct a public hearing to determine whether the proposed facility will significantly affect the quality of life of adjoining landowners and the surrounding community, and then adopt a resolution either in support or opposition to the location of the proposed facility.
Thank you.
Could you state the section? I think it's what, 75-10-516-sub2?
Right, 516.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions right now? Is Mr. Chinakelo present, and would, would he like to speak?
Good afternoon, everyone.
And if you could say your name for the record, that would be great.
I'm Vinnie Chinakelo. I'm his son. And I brought maybe a small sample here. I'll put it, put it up here, and neighbors can look at it. This, that there, that's photos that taken this morning of the proposed location. It's all fenced per code of Joe Frazier, the man trying to subdevelop that. If you take a closer look, everything's shielded, everything's hidden. The fence we put up is what he requested, and that's what several other junkyards in the area are licensed with, and that's there to look at. But yeah, I, I'm here to speak on behalf of him. Yes, we've, we've had, you know, a rocky past. I can't, I can't argue with that. But the photos that, that she had presented, we just, we were just set up to fail. We had a much smaller place than anyone else, you know, to do what we're doing. We're not here to, you know, throw out excuses or whatever. We just didn't have enough room to do what we're doing. This would help. As you can see here, everything's shielded, everything's proper. And we're here, I'm a landowner. I live about a half mile from the proposed site, as a homeowner, and as long as everything's kept in order, even me as a landowner, you know, put everything aside as far as that's my, you know, my father's. Eventually, maybe I'll be running it. You know, I live right there. I can see it right out of my window, and there's industrial land all around there. I have no issue with it, because as a property owner and taxpayer, that's what helps pay for everything we have in this town, and we are moving in a good direction in this town. We have a lot of new improvements, a lot of new things we're putting up, and I think that economically, the businesses, they're necessary in this town. So, yeah, we outgrew what we had. We need more room, and that's where we are today. I understand the people that maybe live in there and say, oh, my goodness, we don't, we don't want any of this, but the whole, as you saw, the whole land plat, that will all be developed, that will all be businesses. We don't know what's going to go there, but, you know, we're a local business. We're just trying to expand, and I think if given the chance, I think we will continue, you know, we will run the way that everybody wants it to be ran. So, yeah, it's not a glamorous business, you know, nobody wants another wrecking yard, but there's six or seven wrecking yards right there, and, you know, I understand that sometimes it looks like we got a lot more junk than anyone else, but we're all doing the same thing. We all got cars coming and going all the time. So I'd just like to say that. And then, there's a couple neighbors that I spoke to that I know from previous businesses, as I got, I got my own small company, but there's one neighbor that says, hey, I wanted to build a dream, my dream home, and I'm going to look at that all the time. I says, well, what would help? He says, well, if you could plant some more trees, that would make me, you know, that'll kind of shield it. Okay, that's fine. I spoke to him. If that's what you need, you know, we're here. You know, I, I'm not trying to run and hide, you know. We're here to make it, to make it good for everyone. So, we're here. If anyone's got any comments, what they want to do, we, you know, we're here to work with you. And I think just because, let's say we, you know, deny this, we got all these vehicles. We can't just throw them away, because that's the life savings invested in those. So, I mean, we're, okay, we're back to square one. Well, what do we do with these? You know, we were at Long Acres renting that. We got letters from James. We got, all right, you got to go. This was the only solution that we could come up with, let alone scrapping everything, throwing it away, and then just sitting around and not doing anything. We would like to be productive members of the taxpayers and of the community. So, that's, that's one thing. And we all want this Missoula, Missoula County to grow and prosper, and that we're here to be part of that. We want to be part of the community. We already own land on Garymore, and like I said before, yes, it's not glamorous, but we're here. We're trying. Anytime anyone reaches out to us, we try to, try to do it. Yeah, like I said, it's been a rocky past. I can't say nothing about that. So if anyone has questions, comments, what would, what they would like to see, what they like see done, we're here. So, yeah, we'd like, you know, to accommodate anything that's in our, within our means, you know. Obviously, you know, well, we don't want to see this. Well, I mean, I can't really put this in my pocket and just disappear, you know what I mean? So that's there. And then, you know, I think vehicle recycling, it's necessary. We all have one or two or three vehicles, and someday they got to go somewhere. So they usually go to a wrecking yard. People sell the parts off of them. Then they get scrapped for whatever, you know, turned into the next thing that they become. So, that's why we're here. We don't, we don't want to fight anyone. We don't want to be a thorn in anybody's side. We want to work together with the landowners, with, with the county, with everybody, to move forward as a county and as a city. So, we're here for any questions, comments, or whatever anyone suggests be done. But I ask everyone to look at the pictures. There's, those are all taken either from DeShaw, from inside the driveway, or from a roller coaster, which I'll border it, and it's all licensed the way DEQ requires, and the way the landowner asked us, per code, to fence it. If anything else, I mean, if, I don't know, I don't know if they want taller fence, if they want complete solid fence. I mean, we're, we're here to discuss that.
Thank you. And can you flip that around so that folks in the audience could see it?
Maybe set it up here so that, that thing blocks things.
Got a pillar in the way there. Got a pillar in the way there.
Yeah, if you zoom in, I mean, you can see there's, there's nothing on the outside. Given the opportunity, we can keep it.
Yeah, if you speak into the mic. Yeah, while you're still up, your one question for you, Mr. Chinikailo. What's the reason why you began operating the wrecking yard before obtaining a license?
Well, the license process, it's, it's a lengthy process, and yes, we're, we're in the process of purchasing that, that plot of land, the whole 7.9 acres or whatever, whenever that's available through the county and everyone. And so, we had, we had all these vehicles, all this inventory, we gotta do something with it, and like I said, we can't just, you can't just throw it away because it's, it's thousands and thousands of dollars that, obviously, my dad and, and my brothers that, you know, you can't just throw away your livelihood and then start over because for, obviously, some small businesses, that's, that's hard to do. So, we had, you know, Mr. Long told us, "Hey, that's it. We, we need you gone." All right, so this is, this is the best solution we came up with that we could do to get out of his yard and move into a lot that's zoned for this, and it's neighboring, like I said, five or six other licensed wrecking yards. And right now, we are licensed with DEQ and everyone with the Gary Moore location, but we're just looking for the opportunity to expand and do that without being a pain in the butt for anybody.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, another question from Commissioner.
I've already received complaints about cars stored outside of this unpermitted facility, and so that being the case with the 18-year history, us approving you one with conditions that you had to keep it clean, and now moving to a new facility that should accommodate your space needs, and there are already complaints of vehicles stored outside. In your pictures, they're not there, but they're, they're there in our pictures, and we have received complaints from the public of, of cars parked outside of this facility already. And, and so can you explain that and why it would behoove us to, to after 18 years of non-compliance and conditioning permits, give you another permit?
So the, the photos you guys had of this lot were obviously of the inside of it. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't know, there's no photos of vehicles outside of it, and that's, that's our, I mean, I don't know, maybe someone's got them, but from what we've got and what we're doing, anything we got, we've got the room to put it away. These photos stated, it, it's not like I just moved everything around and took these photos. These, this is what it looks like, and, you know, if you're just driving down the road, unless you're really trying to look at it, I mean, it's, it's a fenced-off area. You don't, you, you can't really tell what's there. Yeah, I mean, you, you, I mean, I don't know, if, if we put up 12-foot fence, solid fence, I mean, maybe you couldn't tell, but from the road, I don't feel that it, it impacts anyone, and me myself, I live right on Roller Coaster, so yes, I would be concerned if we had vehicles everywhere all over the road, but that's just, in the future, there's just no room for that because there's no excuse for it. We got the room for it. We have the, we have the ground to put the vehicles inside of the fence, and that's, that's the future plan to keep doing that and moving forward, doing it the right way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chinikailo. Yeah, we'll open it up for public comment now. If anyone would like to make a comment, come on up to the microphone and please state your name for the record.
So my name is Cheryl. Legally, it's Cheryl Jamison Nelson, and I've not done this, so can I ask him a question? Okay.
Address, address the chair and we'll.
So, I mean, he just started in this, I live on Grass Valley, so our property looks right, cuts through someone else's property, but we get to see it, and we saw it from day one as they started doing the development, and I walk Grass Valley, which parallels part of Desha, and then it curves and intersects with Desha, and bumpers, broken taillights, body part, I mean, car parts strewn. They're bringing them through a, from Gary Moore, and Moccasin intersects Desha. Moccasin is paved to the east, and it kind of ends in a kind of a little bit of a cul-de-sac, but there's a dirt road there that's not even actually a licensed road or anything, and they're bringing these vehicles through there, and, you know, there's parts through there, and big trucks. If you've never driven on Desha, I encourage you to, but make sure you have a good vehicle. It's, the lower part is, is really bad, but actually, the north part between Moccasin, where Desha quits being paved, and to Roller Coaster, check the road department. That is probably one of their biggest pains in the, the behind. It is a horrific road. It's washboard, rutted, it is, and then with these vehicles coming and towing, it's bouncing, it's, you know, like I said, I've had to get off this, it's narrow because of the big ruts on the side, there's no place, and I understand. I live on a dirt road. I mean, I understand these things, but you're driving down Desha, you can tell what it is. And after hearing, I even have more concerns and reserves about this facility is, were they ever in compliance? Were they ever in compliance? You know, he said they moved. Okay, they moved. The picture was shown in July that Shannon Terry did, and in May, I mean, are they going to take, are they hoping to build it a seven-acre junkyard? And, you know, is he going to make up the difference in the, the value of my property? I understand that it's a light industrial. We have camp well drilling. It's nicely fenced, kept. We have Nelson, I think, is it Nielsen Nelson Electric, right there, nicely kept up. We keep our property up. My rent, our neighbors, the Reiners, keep their property up. The lakes, they're here. Keep our property up. We value our property. We value our land, and I'm really concerned that as you fly over, coming in from, to Missoula from the west, it is absolutely, I understand there's a purpose for junkyards, but it is disgusting. I've sat out there trying to kind of find my place, you know, see if the husband's down there, whatever, and all you see are these, they're, maybe years ago, the junkyards and the wrecking yards were considered out, outside. It is no longer. We are growing. We are developing. Yes, that lot of land has been there for a long time, but it's starting to come alive. It's not going to. It's going to be a massive wrecking yard, and I'm concerned about, I have nothing against the Chinikailos or anyone running this, but the environment that it brings with it, it's definitely not a positive influence, and I'm just concerned that, that I oppose it. My husband couldn't get out of work. He opposes it, and I hope you take into consideration that they have not been in compliance from day one. They've already are not in compliance because they started it without the proper regulations or proper licenses. How do we know that in you government? You know, it's just going to get worse. They already have a track record. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Shannon, could we have you put the aerial up? That, just kind of the overview, the bigger, further out aerial.
And I didn't mention this earlier, but since we do have so many public hearings, hearings today, if folks could try to stick to around three minish, minute-ish, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
My name is, hello, Nancy Lake, and we live on Grass Valley. I pulled off the internet what is, because I didn't know what a wrecking yard was, and, and what I found on the internet, it talks about runoff discharges, air conditioning systems, batteries with acid, oil, gasoline. I, I mean, who looks at those things in a wrecking yard? I guess I'm concerned about if they're not complying visually, are they complying with whatever it is, federal regulations for the disposal of those liquids? The other thing is air pollution. I guess there's quite a bit of potential there, and let me say, really, I am pro-business, and I would never want to step on someone's livelihood, and I really, I feel for this family from what that young man was saying, and if you do approve it, I, I hope they would comply, but it seems like you had years and years and years of non-compliance. Why did we have years and years of non-compliance? What do you do if there's non-compliance? I, I worry about that. That's thing one. Thing two is Desha Road. Ever since those trucks have been carrying those big, those cars, the big trucks carry the cars over to that entryway there to get into the property, Desha has been deteriorating, and that's just because it's a dirt road. But can we ever pave Desha, especially if that is going to be an industrial area there, light or heavy industrial, whatever? I, I think Desha appears to a lot of people to be a little country lane. It is not. It is well-traveled, highly traveled.
And I believe paving will occur this summer on Desha. So apart from the issue at hand, help is on the way.
Okay, thank you.
Down to what, Roller Coaster?
Hey, that's perfect.
To the railroad.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Lake. Additional public comment? Yeah, come on up.
Thank you for this time. My name's Larry Mellinger, and I live directly across the road from this wrecking facility. Let me say, I'm not opposed to wrecking facilities, but I would have to say that what I've heard here today I was not aware of, but it pretty much speaks for itself. My wife and I, we have lived on our property since 1993. We have always strived to keep our property looking very nice. Last winter, we built a brand-new home, and, which you can imagine is not an inexpensive undertaking, and obviously, we are concerned about the value of our home in the future. We strive to keep it looking nice. We have visitors come by and the first thing that they say is, "Is that a wrecking yard over there, or is that a junkyard?" Say, "Yes, it is." And I feel that if we were ever to want to sell our home, that's going to be the first concern that a potential buyer's going to have if they see that, and so we are very concerned about it, and it just seems kind of to me like this is kind of after the fact if it requires a license or a permit. It's already there. We've witnessed the whole thing transpire. You know, I would have to say that if I were to go home today and attempt to build so much as a storage shed that's a square foot over what's allowed to where you have to have a permit, in short order, somebody from the county would show up and they would make me stop work on that, pretty much guaranteed. So, that's about all I really had to say. Like, say what you've said pretty much speaks for itself, so, and a lot of my neighbors I haven't even met, but, I mean, we open up our blinds, we look out our front window, and it's right there. We go out on our porch and it's right there, and based on what you said now, this thing is not going to stay this size. It's going to grow, and, and based on what we've seen already, you know, bottom line, yes, we, we definitely have concerns, so that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. I do just want to quote a letter. I've kept all my correspondence over the years. Back in 2005, just quoting a letter from Eli and Associates, "We were not unaware that this was going to take place across the road, that Joe Frazier was going to develop this for," and I'm quoting the letter here, "for light industrial uses, paving, landscaping, street trees, walkways, and covenants are elements of the design." And we just feel that this is anything but something that complies with that. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment at this time? Yes, sir.
I own land out there. I've got two five-acre tracts out there, and Desha Lane, or one's on Desha Lane and one's just up the street.
And your name, sir?
Charles Knupple. A and U, two P Z L. I was in law enforcement for 33 years, federal, and with you guys for 18 years and have violations every year and you still got them in business, where are you, where are you coming from? If I'm in violation, they get me. They don't just keep patting me on the back. If you don't have the regulations, then don't allow those businesses in there, but that's, that's beside the point. I'm against this naturally. I'm, I'm not for this. You talk about the, the, looking at these things, just like these pictures this kid brought up, all the beautiful pictures, nice. They're, they're visionary of the mountains and the plains and all. They're in the car in none of those. There's not a car in one of those pictures. Nice. That's how you do that. You don't show what the problem is, but that's okay. The land prices are going to drop badly naturally because you can't, you can't sell land where the wrecked cars are, and it looks like you got no controls on what, what they're doing, so there's no controls there. 18 years of violations and, and still in business, there's something wrong, bad. Something wrong. So that's, past violations are found, $10,000 fines, you better raise those fines up a lot, and these cars there with all the rodents and stuff that's in among those cars, nobody thinks about that. But land prices are down and, and I think this thing should be someplace else in the fencing. The lot of the fences I've seen, they're not fences, they're just a little, so that neighbor don't see, but the other ones are all open. I mean, they're not fencing those things right. So that's, yeah, they're not, there's no controls, and that's where I think you people need the controls. You got some kind of law that you can shut them down or do what they want to do, and this kid just says, "No, we have no cars out on the thing," and then he brings you pictures like this, you gotta laugh. There's a car in that picture. Think about it.
Thank you.
It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Been a long time.
You bet.
That's, I seen you were landlord association one time, right?
That is right. Good memory. All right, any additional public comment? Come on up, please.
I'm Pamela Mellinger. Pamela Mellinger, Mary's wife. I'll just read what I wrote, because I'm not.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, all right. Dear Missoula County Commissioners, this will be a letter truly written from the heart in how this decision on allowing.
Okay, take your time. I do the same thing.
A wrecking yard and how it will impact my everyday life. First of all, the fence itself looks like a wrecked car, looks like no concern or care was put into it. So that is the first thing that we see waking up in the morning, open our curtains, and throughout the day, not very nice. We have seen several times already a big truck hauling, bringing in and unloading wrecked vehicles outside the fence. It's very, very disheartening, and it hurts to see that, and wondering how horrible that accident must have been, and thinking what that person or persons were through, through the accident, what they had to go through. It's just not a nice thing seeing that stuff. This is not what I want to have to look at every day, and then when we have family or friends come to visit, this is the first thing they ask, is that a junkyard across from you? And sadly, we have to say yes. Then not to mention, if they come to, if, if it comes, we want to sell our property. That would be the first thing a potential buyer will see. I'm sure that you will hurt, I'm sure it will hurt the value of our property tremendously because when it comes down to it, who would want a wrecking facility right across from your property, looking out your front window? And we are right across from this, right across the road from us. And areas of the fence is falling down already. The entrance, when you go in, into, into this, it's, it's. The entrance, when you go in, into, into this, it's, it's falling down. It wasn't put up, no, not nice at all. It seemed to me it's very poor idea, even considering putting something as a junkyard right along a public road and across from residential area. Several of us take pride in our homes and trying to keep them looking nice around them. We like to keep our place and our surrounding area as appealing as possible so that it would be of value in the future. A wrecking yard defeats that possibility. The land is there. Why not put it up against existing junkyard and auction? Behind all of us, along Deshaue, there is an existing junkyard. I, I believe that land's along with this old track five. It could be for sale, or I don't understand why they can't put it there. It'd be back out of the way, at least off the road. Back in 2005, we were sent a letter saying it would be for light industrial uses. Paving, landscaping, street trees, walkways, and covenants are elements of the design. A junkyard is far from that. It's the last piece of large land available on this side of the airport where residents border up against. My wish would be anything that goes on that land, it would be of good taste, trying to make it as appealing and attractive as possible. My husband and I lived along Deshaue Lane for 24 years. We have always enjoyed it, and it's home to us. And we hope to be able to stay living here for several years to come. But a wrecking facility right in front of our house would be crushing to my heart. Thanks for your considerations.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment at this time? Seeing, yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Stromeyer. My name's Nick Kaufman. I lived in this neighborhood for the past 30 years. In a much younger time in my life, I was an enforcement officer for Missoula County for zoning and flood plans. It's not an enviable job, Shannon. But, but enforcement is part of what makes certain land uses tolerable to a community. And so, I think you showed Shannon early on that this was a townhome development. We call it a C-TED in the Missoula County zoning regulations. If you look at Chapter Three in the C-TED regulations, I think that across the front of this property is actually a road that serves the lots in that subdivision. And one of the requirements, I think, of Chapter Three is that road meet county standards. So I drive by that on Deshaue Lane. It doesn't look like that meets any kind of a county standard. Maybe I'm missing whether their access is a different driveway than that road.
So Nick, just to clarify, we recently approved, the road will be, has to be in compliance before they can sell lots. We just did that recently, so it'll happen this spring.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Frazier will be paying for the materials.
I really appreciate that, Jean. Because what it comes down to really is, is if the, if the stuff that's really appears to be easy to correct, keeping vehicles inside the fence, I've watched it since day one, when they had vehicles there and when they built the fence and what it looks like. But if we're, we can't enforce the things we can see from the road, what about the things we can't see from the road? What about the vehicle liquids? This is in an aquifer, and there's a lot of wells downstream and a lot of homes downstream from this particular property. Missoula County operates a junk vehicle facility right on Deshaue Lane. I don't know if I've ever had an idea about even complaining about that operation, right? But we know how they should look, and we know how they can operate because of that example. My greatest concern is, is that because we don't have the enforcement ability, right? And we can enforce the things we can see that are right in front of our face, how do we enforce the things we can't see that are equally insidious and a threat to our public health, safety, and welfare? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Any, yeah, Commissioner.
I was just wondering if Shannon could elaborate a little bit on the enforcement difficulties for public education, as well as how this, what DEQ has to do with this?
Sure. Well, part of the problem is that we can tell somebody to do something different, but they're the ones that have to do it. And so, we don't go out and move the cars ourselves. A lot of times, people are frustrated that when they see a violation, they think we're allowing it, and that's not the case. We are telling them that they can't operate that way, but they still actually have to take that action and operate in compliance with the regulations. That is, that's huge. Secondly, the, the Motor Vehicle Recycling and Disposal Act, it really focuses on junk vehicles. And because of the definition of a junk vehicle, if a car is operable, if it is licensed, it can look terrible. It can look wrecked, and it can be out in public view, and it is not a violation of the state law. It would be a violation on Gary Moore of the license because the commissioners at that time said that, that you couldn't park those kind of cars outside in public view. But unfortunately, it's not clear what the enforcement mechanism for that is. The enforcement mechanism could be community decay. It could be public nuisance, or it could be revoking the license. The commissioners have tried to, tried to not support the license in the past, and that didn't bring the facility into compliance. So there, there, there are a lot of difficult things when it comes to enforcement, for sure. As for what the wrecking yard rules cover, they don't cover much. They cover making sure everything is behind a fence if it qualifies as a junk vehicle. And they make sure that they, the license is posted and that the proper paperwork goes to the Department of Justice. And that is pretty much it. There aren't, we do annual inspections of wrecking yards, but we don't do annual, that's what we look at when we do annual wrecking yard inspections. It's really quite limited.
Thank you, Ms. Terryo. Any additional public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Discussion or questions from the commission?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the letter that Mr. and Mrs. Mellinger referred to as to what was promised for that subdivision, that subdivision was never built. And so what's going to happen now doesn't have those regulations. There's, the law's been changed. And the, this townhome unit thing doesn't have the same regulations. So it might not be landscaping and such. I would hope that Mr. Frazier wants to have a nice industrial park there, and I hope that they do that. But that particular subdivision that was approved with those conditions and requirements was never filed. And so this is something different. I just wanted you to not expect that, for sure, anyway.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
Well, I just also like to point out the fact that we actually sit downhill from this existing wrecking yard. There's a large retention pond directly across the road from our property. As it is now, there's a culvert right there. All that runoff goes under the road, comes to, comes on my property, comes within 15 feet of my well casing. I have concerns about other things that might go on over there, not to mention this existing wrecking facility. What could leach into the ground or whatnot? I have real concerns. And I expressed this in a letter back in 2005 to Eli and Associates when we were given opportunity to comment on this one. So that, that was a big concern. I actually talked to a gentleman with the county, his name escapes me at the, at the moment, that is going to be in charge of overseeing all the drainage issues and whatnot when the road's put in and this and that. But I, we have real concerns, you know, as far as the value of our property, what this could mean to our water, our groundwater. I think you understand. I think anybody who would be in our shoes, you know, having a new home or any home on their property would have concerns about, about this sort of thing. So again, I just wanted to add that. You know, if, if you, if you come out and look at, we are downstream from all of this. And so we have, we definitely have concerns. And I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, what, what if anything do we do in terms of, we've heard a few folks express concern about fluids or maybe hazardous materials on a site like this that could be leaching into groundwater? Do we do any interior inspections of these sorts of facilities?
I hate to tell you that I don't know if this is covered under the pollution prevention permit. So that is something that I wrote to myself to see if a wrecking facility has a pollution prevention permit. It would be a violation of the State Water Quality Act to allow fluids to drain onto property. But I don't know if there's an inspection mechanism or not. So I need to look into that.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion by the commission? Or a motion? And the motion before us would be to adopt a resolution opposing the location of this particular motor vehicle wrecking facility.
Well, I agree with what a lot of people have said here, that businesses like this are, are necessary, and we like to foster business in our community. And there are several similar businesses in this area that, to my knowledge, are not causing the problems and the, the issues that we're seeing with the current applicants. And I also agree with the applicant that people aren't going to like any development, any industrial development across from the residential. So, and it's entirely possible that in the future there will be something industrial built there that the neighborhood won't really care for either, and it fits zoning. And when I first saw this, I was like, oh, a wrecking facility in industrial zoning. That should be easy, until I read fast, passed the first sentence, right? Because of this proven mode of operation for 18 years that, that has obviously negatively affected the quality of life of, of the businesses around and any residences that are going to be around. I would normally go for conditioning a permit. But I've worked in enforcement, and I know that some of the pitfalls of trying to enforce things. And also, they've been given that chance. You know, I feel like when they tried to pull the permit and then gave, gave a permit with conditions, do you just keep doing that? Do we do that again? It didn't work. They didn't comply with it. And so I feel like we've already taken that kind of like remedial step of, we'll give you another chance, and they, and they failed. So I don't know what else we can do to, to be responsible to protect the quality of life of our residents other than, than opposing that DEQ gives them the license. So I would move that we adopt a resolution opposing the location of the proposed existing and unlicensed wrecking yard on a portion of Lot Five of the Deshaue Lane subdivision number two, and submit our resolution to the Montana DEQ.
I'll second that motion. I think that all the folks here today and the other comments that we've received say, show this is going to significantly affect the quality of life of joining property owners. And Mr. Chanikalo, you're going to, you and your family are going to have to earn your neighbor's trust and respect again with the existing facility that you have. The 18 years of non-compliance, I, I think that the question was very legitimate. Have they ever been in compliance? And it, we don't have any, I mean, we have pages in here, all those dates that Shannon talked about, plus a bunch of opportunities that you were given to comply that you might have cleaned it up periodically. But for the general, most of the time, it's not in compliance.
Yeah, I would concur. This has got to be one of the most egregious examples of a track record of violation of state law that I've seen, which is clearly unacceptable and leads me to the viewpoint that there is a high likelihood and present reality that people's quality of life will be adversely affected by this, by the continued use of this facility. So I would support the motion to oppose the location of a motor vehicle wrecking facility for Fedora Chanikalo and CF Auto on Lot Five of Deshaue Lane subdivision number two. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Shannon, will this be transmitted to DEQ?
Yes, after you sign the resolution, we will get it to DEQ. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner.
So those of you that talked a little bit about Deshaue Lane and, and the, especially the drainage issue, our Public Works Director is sitting here today, and I know you heard what you said. So as the, the road gets improved this summer, they won't be, you're not allowed to have your drainage end up on somebody else's property. So that should be addressed, wouldn't you say, Greg, with how their plans work and their drainage plan? As the road is improved, we'll make sure we have the property, borrow pits and stuff to take the stormwater away from people's property.
To the extent that we can.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for, who came out for this particular item.
Yes.
One last thing. Come on up to the mic, please, and state your name one last time.
Nancy Lake. I just want to say hats off to the road department for what they do out there. They really do take good care of us.
Thank you. Compliments are always welcome. Okay, we'll move on to our second public hearing. This is a continuation of a public hearing that we opened last year. This is the result of a request, a petition, actually, of members of Rural Improvement District 282 to transfer ownership of the bridge over the Swan River, constructed by the district to the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association. So I think how we're going to work this is John Hart from our attorney's office is going to offer some introductory remarks about this kind of where we are at right now. I'll give the opportunity to Greg Robertson from our Public Works Office to say a few words. Over the past couple of months, I believe Greg and John have given some thought about the possibility of what a maintenance district or a Rural Special Improvement District 282 might look like as part of one means to ensure maintenance of the bridge. And then we'll open it up for public comment, and then we'll take up the motion before us to approve or deny the petition, and then talk about next steps. So, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, for the record, my name is John Hart. I'm a deputy county attorney. And I'd just note that we're going from one sizzling issue to the next, wrecking yards to RSIDs. It's always, it's always fun here in local government. As you said, Commissioner Stromeyer, this is, we're, we're hearing a petition that some of the property owners along Lindbergh Lake brought. The statute that they filed a petition under, 712-2128, authorizes you as commissioners to transfer the ownership of improvements in an RSID to the owners of the property in a district. And you're correct, on November 30th, you opened a hearing, you took public comment, you closed that. You talked about some of the ideas that you had in terms of how to maintain the bridge that the homeowners are asking you to transfer to them. And so I did do a little bit of research between then and now to look at that. But first, I want to point out that the decision that you have to make today under this particular statute is to decide whether to transfer ownership of the improvements to the property owners. That's your one option. Your section, second option is to continue the operation of the district and maintenance and control of the improvements as provided in the RID statutes. And I, I point out that second option because you do have an affirmative obligation under the statute to improve these, or to maintain these improvements. And we find that affirmative obligation in 7-12-2120. And I'm going to paraphrase that statute. It says, "Whenever any special improvements petitioned for have been made, built, constructed, erected, or accomplished, the Board of County Commissioners, under whose jurisdiction the district was created, or supervised, or directed, shall adequately and suitably maintain and preserve the improvements and keep those improvements in proper repair and operation by contract or otherwise." There's two options. There's not a third option. There isn't a, we're not going to do anything option. Those are the options you have today. That's the decision you need to make today. And so how, if you choose not to transfer ownership of the bridge as petitioned, how do you go about maintaining that bridge and fulfilling your obligation? about maintaining that bridge and fulfilling your obligation for maintenance? What I would suggest is we look at another section in the RID statute, and that's 7-12-2161. And that, and bear with me here, states that the Board of County Commissioners shall estimate as near as practicable the cost of maintaining, preserving, or repairing the improvements in each district for each year, beginning January 1st or another time as may appear. Then, the Board may, before the first Monday in September of each year, pass and finally adopt a resolution levying and assessing all the property within the district with an amount equal to the whole cost of maintaining, preserving, or repairing the improvements within the district. So, you get an estimate for the cost of the maintenance, you pass a resolution saying, we're going to levy on the property owners in that district this amount of money in an equitable way, you know, proportionally amongst all the people in the district, and then you provide notice of that to all the property owners. Then, there's an opportunity for property owners, you know, to absorb that, consider it. There's a protest opportunity for people if they think that, for some reason, that that maintenance estimate is unreasonable, or they're not benefited by that maintenance under the statute. They can bring a protest to you. That protest is then heard, and so long as protests don't equal 50% or more of the folks assessed, then you go forward and collect that money. And the money then is deposited into a maintenance fund that can then only be used by statute for purposes of maintaining that particular infrastructure. And maybe there's a year, maybe there's many years that go by where no maintenance is warranted, so there wouldn't be a levy and assessment. But as the bridge is inspected, and we all know that it's now back on the state bridge inspection schedule, so we'll have some sense of its, you know, condition and state, and we'll know, you know, if maintenance is warranted, and we can go through these procedures from time to time. So, this is the path forward that I propose that would fulfill your obligation to maintain the bridge if you choose today not to transfer it to the owners. And that's what I have for you. You guys have any questions for me?
Thank you. Greg, is there anything you want to add?
I would just add, the process that John has outlined is typically what you do with the water and sewer districts, Lewis and Clark, and Lolo, and Elmar, and New Meadows. So, this is really nothing new, and it would be handled as part of the budgeting cycle. I would also note that, based on HDR's 2016 inspection, we estimated the repairs primarily to the deck itself, which is the most expensive item, is roughly about $25,000 to the district to be spread in a manner you choose to. It could be spread over, you know, a period of years to lessen the burden, but the, I think there are probably cheaper alternatives than the one that was specified by HDR that would also lessen the cost as well and still provide the same quality level. The issue with HDR's report is that there's only a couple of contractors in the state of Montana that can do the work, and there are alternatives to what they had proposed. Depending on the decision you make, what I would recommend, that if you choose to perpetuate the maintenance district and not transfer ownership, that you direct John and I to develop the necessary documents for your consideration at a future date. That's all I have.
Thank you. One question for you, John. So, in the scenario that you lined out, January 1st has come and gone for 2018, so if hypothetically we end up going down the path of assessments for the maintenance district, we would be talking, coming up with a cost estimate by January 1st, 2019, and then a resolution by September 2019?
No, I think there's some wiggle room in the statute. So, the statute says, "Beginning January 1 or another time as may appear necessary."
Ah, okay.
So, I think we got, I mean, ideally, we would want to do it by January 1st, but under the circumstances, I think we could do it at any time that we have the information. And then, the other point I would make, the statute says you pass and adopt the resolution by the first Monday of September. I would suggest that we do that long before the first Monday of September, you know, simply because if there are protests, we want to be able to hear those, we want to be able to address those, long before then this would supposedly go on somebody's tax bill for the tax bills that people get, what, the 1st of November? I mean, so, in other words, as I envision this, and of course, I'm not making any decisions, but as I envision this, because the property owners want maintenance done, let's get this on their taxes as soon as we can, so we can fund this maintenance district, then get the work done as soon as possible.
Thank you. Greg, did you?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, in addition to what John had to say, I think it would be easily accommodated during our budgeting process for this year, the notice and protest for the expansion of the district or contraction. In some cases, there are some properties that were part of the original district that don't have benefit of the improvements, so there's basically two separate processes that we need to go through. And so, any expansion or contraction would be handled through a public process, but the current district already exists and continues to exist. And so, we don't really have to do anything with it, other than to pass by resolution, a, basically, a notice of assessment, and that September 1st deadline is necessary to meet DOR requirements, so that they get on the November tax rolls.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, I guess to kick things off, would Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association or representative thereof like to make a comment?
Mr. Robertson?
I'm going to have to bug out here in just a few minutes, so I'm going to leave here at 3:30.
Okay, we will not take offense, so, okay, thank you.
We may follow you. My name is Colleen Dowdell. I'm an attorney with Ward and Thane, and I represent members of the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association. And I'm just going to address a couple of the legal issues. And the first issue that I see as problematic is that the purpose of this RSID was to construct a bridge. And if you go through all of the documents that, and the exchanges of letters with the county, it was never anticipated first that the county would ever maintain this bridge. The county administrators, Public Works, County Surveyors' Office were adamant. They were not going to maintain this bridge. And they also were adamant that they were going to transfer ownership of the bridge. The SID was created solely for the purpose of doing the construction of the bridge. The statute that John recites that talks about making assessments and doing estimates by January and assessments by September, that statute in some form has been on the books since 1915. So, this is not a surprise that this obligation to maintain improvements and a methodology for maintaining improvements existed. But Missoula County never intended to maintain this bridge. They didn't want the bridge. They didn't like the process, and yet, here we are. The statute that discusses the creation of a maintenance levy, I believe, was anticipated that when the RSID was created, the RSID would be created with an assessment for construction and improvements, and an assessment for maintenance. There is one place in that statute that mentions the term "maintenance district," and it is wholly out of character. It does not fit in. This is not a maintenance district that you are creating. You don't have the authority under this statute to create a maintenance district. You are levying, under the original RSID, 40 years or so after the bonds were paid off, and during which those 40 years, the homeowners have done the maintenance themselves. And that is, I think, an issue of equity. The county made representations for years, and now have discovered that they have an obligation to maintain this when there was, again, legislation passed that would allow them, allow you, to pass this bridge to the homeowners association. It is, I, like John, could not find any statutory reference that would make this district go away. But I also believe that this district cannot maintain itself for no purpose for 40 years, and that is what the position that you are taking, that you can bring to life any RSID district and start assessing maintenance. And I think that opens a huge can of worms for Missoula County. I think that you don't have to use this statute to provide for the maintenance of this bridge. There is another statute that allows for the maintenance, for creating a maintenance district, that you could use, and using this one is inadvisable, in my opinion. John and I have had some discussion in the last two days about the right to protest, and I was glad to hear that he acknowledges that there is a right to protest, the levying of this maintenance assessment under the statute that he is recommending that you use. And there certainly is a right under the, actually, I don't know if there's a right under the other statute, because it requires an 85% consent for you to create that maintenance So, I would ask you to consider that this is not the only methodology that's available for you, and for reasons that Mr. John Kamiro will explain, there are clear preferences for using the other statute for both the county and the homeowners association. So, I'm not going to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdell.
Bill Junkamire, representing the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association. First off, thank you very much for allowing us to have this continuation of the hearing. Hopefully, it won't be as lively as the last one was. But why are we here? Basically, to finalize on what we started on 11/30, November 30th, and that is to establish a go-forward plan for the maintenance, repair, and operation of the Lindbergh Lake LLHOA Bridge. Couple of points that I want to comment on for John and Greg. First off, John said there were a few members that had signed the petition, you know, in actuality, it was 73% of the RSID members that had signed the petition. So, it is a, and the statute requires 66%, so it's a, you know, definite plurality of the population within the RSID. Number two, on the maintenance costs associated with the bridge, we have a firm fixed quote on the overlay for the bridge, and that came out not to exceed $15,000. You know, Greg mentioned $25,000. There's definitely guardrail work that needs to be done, and we've estimated that's another $10,000, so we end up at the same point, as far as maintenance expenses that need to occur here in the short term, as far as the bridge. Okay? You know, but why are we here? You know, we're debating, you know, a little bit, I'm a little bit disappointed that we're still debating a final outcome here. You know, after the November 30th hearing, I sent an email to you, the Commissioners, in regards to trying to lay out a process that we could follow in order to establish a formal proposal that we could all come together and present to you today, and not take up your valuable time, re-reviewing these things. And in summary, my email to the Commissioners was that, you know, I stated paraphrasing, "Please let me know if you have any other suggestions. Just want to provide a smooth process for all parties. Again, appreciate the time you have committed to this subject, and I'm optimistic that we can have a workable framework in place for you to consider at your February 22nd meeting." Commissioner Curtis responded, "After Greg does his initial analysis, we will be ready to make some assignments to achieve the goal. Thanks for outlining what you see as the next steps and for the offer to assist. We will discuss next steps and get back to you before the end of the month." You know, obviously, those conversations did not take place, and so, therefore, I'm saying, yes, I get it, everybody's pretty busy, but I'm a little disappointed that we're having to take up your time again and present cross-purpose type of solutions to this topic. Okay? So, you know, forgive me when we have disagreements with the county position as far as what we see as a possible solution roadmap to get this issue finally resolved after 40 years. But that's obviously part of the reason why we're here, is to get this finished up. We need to try to, you know, we need to, we've been, not arguing, we've been debating this issue on how best to maintain this bridge over the last 40 years, since this year is the 40th anniversary for that bridge. And up to 2005, things seemed to work fairly well. The county would do the inspection, they would do some light maintenance work, and then they would build the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association, and the association would pay the county. And that arrangement worked pretty well up through 2005. Then, for whatever reason, things seemed to fall apart in 2005. There was a subdivision proposed up there, a lot of people got all lathered up about that, and we had a lot of debates, pro and con, in regards to allowing the subdivision. And I think some of that leaked into the care and feeding of this bridge. And, you know, an example of that is, up to 2005, there were weight limit postings on the bridge of 15 tons. In 2005, the county removed those signs, and currently, there is no weight limit postings. Now, that 15-ton agreement, even though the bridge is capable of supporting higher weights, that 15-ton came about as an agreement, when the RSID was formed, between the homeowners' association and the county, that we would post it with this kind of weight limit. So, once again, there was this gentleman's handshake at the beginning of time, as far as how this bridge was to be operated. But it became clear after 2005, that's also when the maintenance dropped, there was no further maintenance by the county, and there were no further inspections after 2005. And so, it became clear, as a homeowners' association, that we needed to force the issue on this. Excuse me. So, in 2015, we recognized that there needed to be a process to obtain a public hearing like this, because we had no mechanism, as a homeowners' association, to bring this issue before the county commissioners. before the county commissioners and try to force a decision on how we get a go-forward plan with, with this bridge, a care and feeding plan. And so we passed legislation in 2015 that laid out a process where the ownership of the bridge could be transferred upon a public hearing and presenting petitions. You know, so we met it with Commissioner Curtis in 2016. She had John Hart prepare a letter on the legal status of the bridge, and at that point in time, it was recommended, or John's opinion was, that the bridge was county property, or a county bridge. At that point, then, we were assured that Department of Public Works would get it back on the state, state registers for maintenance and inspection purposes, and we would kind of be where we're at today. That never occurred, and so, at that point in time, I brought forth the petition in order, again, to force this issue. You know, you know. And so here we are today, looking to get this back on track and establish this go-forward plan. The RSID, as Colleen mentioned, was, its purpose was to construct a bridge. The petition that was signed by the homeowners at that time stated the sole purpose was to construct a bridge. There was no maintenance mentioned in either the petition or the county resolution. The arrangement between the LLHOA and the county, where the county would maintain and build the HOA, this occurred through approximately 2004. Okay? So if the county had responsibility to maintain the bridge, where did this side arrangement come from, where the HOA was paying for the maintenance bills? It says to me that, at the very beginning, the intent was to transfer the bridge to the HOA. The HOA would pay for all the maintenance expenses, and they never anticipated that we would get to this point of, of arguing on whose bridge it is. But if you follow this logic, you know, so now we hear that the county can add maintenance and assess, but, you know, we'll look at it as it's not quite that simple. Because if you follow that logic, then the county admits that the RSID was flawed forty years ago, and more specifically, the last fourteen, fifteen years, the county has been negligent in maintaining and supporting the structure. You know, as Colleen said, yes, we opened a can of worms by potentially going down the path we're talking about. So I don't think it is as easy as we can assume, because at the creation of the RSID, there was no mention of maintenance. There was a side arrangement made with the HOA on how the maintenance was to be done and paid. There was no hearing, there was no allowance of protest at the creation, and had this been brought up at the beginning of time, the RSID probably would not have gone through. You know, so Colleen talked about an alternative, and this is where we're trying to look for compromises, ways to work through this, work through this maze, because it, because it isn't easy. It took me a couple of years to come up to speed on all the ins and outs and intricacies associated with this. And there is a statute, 712-2102, that allows for the creation of a maintenance improvement district. And this can be accomplished through a petition process only. And thank you to the last legislature, they amended that statute such that it's an eighty, eighty-five percent threshold. Okay? So that, you know, it used to be a hundred percent threshold in order to create a maintenance improvement district, which is near impossible to get a hundred percent of people to agree at one point in time. But, you know, we achieved a seventy-three percent on this petition process. Is eighty-five percent possible? Yeah, it's possible. It's doable. It's going to take some compromise on both sides to work, work its way through. But, you know, what I would, and we've got people on the extreme right, extreme left, or on the wrong side and the right side, however you want to look at it, and it's going to take compromise in order to make, make a solution that all parties can sign up for and support. You know, one of the major objections with the process that we outlined of transferring the bridge to the homeowners' association, making the homeowners' association financially liable, is people wanted a process where everybody paid their fair share. Okay? That doesn't happen with a voluntary organization like the LLHOA. And so that's where the positive side of a maintenance improvement district that's created through petition is beneficial. On the other side, we would like to settle the transfer issue, the ownership issue of the bridge, and add the bridge transferred to the LLHOA for operational-type management, and also to manage the maintenance, maintenance taking place on it. Why? Because the members of the HOA, it's beneficial to them and them alone, and they have a very vested interest in maintaining this bridge and keeping it up to date. It's a forty-year-old bridge, it needs care at this point, and the maintenance expenses, yeah, they're going to become expensive. We're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars right now, and we haven't even started to get into the wing walls or anything like that yet. Okay? So, and I think by, by linking the two together, creating the maintenance improvement district with the transfer of the bridge to the LLHOA, we can create a compromise that can work. But the, but the eighty-five percent threshold would on, would not be on the county to achieve. It would be on the homeowners' association to get eighty-five percent plurality in moving this maintenance improvement district through. The alternative here is, there is a third alternative that wasn't mentioned, and this would be where the maintenance, if the maintenance improvement district is done, and we determine that the other statute is not applicable because of the potential can of worms that opens up, then the bridge becomes a county bridge, and it's maintained out of the county funds, county bridge fund. You know, and I don't think that's the best of alternative either, because it's certain the county, I get it, you've got a lot of structures under management, you've got a lot of responsibilities, the Public Works Department is probably already resource-constrained, and adding one more structure to their inventory list is probably not the best alternative. So in looking at it, I'm looking at this maintenance improvement district as a potential win-win for everybody involved. There's also several side issues that we talked about.
And Mr. Junkumire, if you could wrap it up, please.
I am right now.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Number one, there was a discussion at the hearing of the potential for gating the bridge, putting gates up. Well, the road is private on the other side, and the homeowners can put up gates on the road as it exists right now. We haven't done so, and in all the time I've been involved in the homeowners' association, I've never heard of a proposal to putting up gates along the homeowners' road, along the private road. Number two, the cleanup of the Jaco Trail issue. This is, no one's, to my knowledge, no one's ever been denied to walking or biking to the Jaco Trail across the private road. Never heard of such a thing, and don't think that would occur in the future either. But I think that, in today's world and today's environment, we could certainly better formalize the access to that Jaco Trail, and I see it very easy that we can do it with signing into walking to the Jaco Trail. You know, again, but you'd need the HOA, LLHOA, to make this happen. So in conclusion, you know, we're trying to look for solutions. It's a forty-year-old problem that's existed. We have a mechanism to get, to get to a final solution, and I think it just takes all parties on all sides to get together and talk it through and work it through, and I'm optimistic that we can get there. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Mr. Junkumire. This is a continuation of our public hearing the last time around in November of 2017. Have to remember which year we're in here. So is there additional public comment on this item, on the petition to transfer? Come on up.
I am.
You may.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, honorable commissioners. My name's Doug Harris, and I purposely not publicly commented before, because I think all the opinions have been adequately expressed, but there's a couple of things here that I urge you to consider when you make the ultimate decision of transfer of ownership. First, our friends of the Confederated Kootenai, Salish, and Ponderay Tribes of the Flathead Nation have tribal rights to the Jaco Trail across the bridge, and that's certainly firsthand unimpeachable evidence of a profound public interest in the bridge. Secondly, you have a letter before you from the forest supervisor of the Flathead National Forest stating the Jaco Trail and thus the bridge are invested in the public interest. So there are the bookends of the dispute. The farther you can keep the bridge out of the hands of the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association, the closer you will be to serving the public interest. And the reason why is that the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association is not compulsory, it's voluntary. It has a governing mechanism that allows a small cobble of like-minded people to run the show as they wish, which leads to very disorganized and very heated meetings with very little due process, and I think fair representation of opposing views. Therefore, there is no body in the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association, other than a voluntary association to some people, that really want to control the bridge. And if they control the bridge, they're getting their hands into the public interest. I think it's that simple. So I implore you to please keep the bridge in the public interest by, number one, voting against the petition, that it is part of vital public infrastructure under the banner of the RSID, and then, number two, the RSID is a perpetual political subdivision under statute that can be reinvigorated with assessments, just as Mr. Hart pointed out. The third point that somewhat electrifies me, and I will sit down briefly on this, but I'll give you a firsthand observation. Years ago, when I was maybe twelve, the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Group Association attempted to chain-link the road, unannounced to some homeowners, such as my father, Warren Harris, and another gentleman named Bob McHugh. What did they do? They backed their trucks up to the gate and tore it out. And since then, there has not been, nor in my view should there ever be, any gates anywhere on the road. It would be an impediment to public access for public safety, public welfare, police power, fire suppression. This is an important issue. The Lindbergh Lake Basin may be the last of the public lakes in the Swan Valley, where public access is virtually guaranteed by existence of a public bridge over the Swan River. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Additional public comment? Come on up.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. My name is Kyle Felsman, and I'm the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Confederated Salish-Kootenai Tribes. And I just want to express my thanks for having here today, and it sounds like this issue has a, a lot of avenues that can be taken, but the only ones that, I guess, for myself, coming from a tribal perspective, but more importantly, a public and general perspective, you know, pertaining to the county anyways, that I just want to ensure that it's known that, at least from our standpoint, that public access, and more importantly to us, tribal access to the area, not be inhibited by whatever decision you're thinking about making. Going from a tribal perspective, we have various documented, state and federal-level documented cultural resources in and throughout the area, the most notably coming from the Jaco Trail, or else we call it in our, in our language, Chuschny. So that, that trail has a long history to it, and it actually ties into a kind of a pretty unfortunate and important event that happened. I don't know if you know about the Swan massacre, that, there's a whole story involved with that, but it just potentially, I just want to make sure that whatever decision you make, that, you know, tribal and public access be, be really, really taken into consideration, and knowing that that bridge is probably the only, you know, efficient way that we can access some of our, our cultural sites and, you know, pieces of our history and our people. And I think that's about all I have to say, and I want to thank you for having me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mike Durgo. I'm the Tribal Preservation Department Head for the Confederated Salish-Kootenai Tribe, and I'd like to echo what Kyle had said, and just let you know that we're not here opposing or supporting the bridge itself. We are here just to make sure, and I don't know, the gentleman spoke earlier about, you know, historical access. We've had access to the site and the, and the trail for many, many years, but we don't know, and our concern is continued access, and we don't know in the future, if you turn that bridge over to a private party, then we, we're not guaranteed access to the trail. So I don't know how, how we can do that. That's our main concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Durgo. Additional public comment? Come on up.
Thanks again, commissioners, for your time. I'm John Ottman. We have a cabin on Lot 19A, and, and I'm just dead-set against the homeowners taking over this ownership of the bridge. We've had a cabin there for fifty-plus years, and it just, I reiterate what Doug Harris says, it, they might have the votes, but I'm not sure about the group. And that's, I just, I just don't see it. Bill and I have been great friends for a long time, we still will be, we'll still have a beer together, but we are definitely against, on either side here, and I really appreciate him going to all that effort to dig it up. But, you know, you hear words like, from their attorney, oh my gosh, there's just this one word of maintenance in here, but I really don't think that. There was maintenance by the county till 2005, and I'm going, you know, I'm not an attorney, but, you know, people put words into things, into statements, and there is some meaning behind them. I, I just feel that it is just truthfully, should be in the county's possession. I have many, problem is, I got three sisters and a couple of brothers, and we, our cabin can't support everything, and a lot of people stay at the campground, and, and they walk over. And on an annual basis, I would guess, four to six of my friends, or my sisters and brothers' friends, are cornered on that road and are questioned who they are, where they're going, and if they have permission to be over here. So it does go on. As far as the road goes, if you look at the map, the common corner of 13, 14, 23, and 24, and Township 19, North Range 7 West, when you look, this was one of the most poorly subdivided subdivisions ever. Our lot, along with many other lots, were never tied into the homeowners' road. And through good gracious of Julie Kochfar's father, he took the time and made sure we all had an opportunity to buy that sliver between our property line and the cabin road. So we, we truthfully had access. And so consequently, the actual road itself, and people trying to get to that Forest Service piece, if you, if you take the time and look at that common corner, we have always used the Forest Service, federal land, until, I believe, Liz Claiborne and Art Ortenberg did a land swap and picked up Section 24. But that segment of road that the homeowners had used the entire time was federal, and so that's the connection between the bridge and the trail, in my eyes. Second, the bridge abutments on both sides are in the high water mark. So technically, it's on state land, not even the county land. And so that, that needs to be addressed. It's in the high water mark, and it influences people that want to use the high water mark. So those are my comments. Thank you again, and Bill, I'll see you for a beer, and I'll bye.
Thank you, Mr. Ottman. Additional public comment? Additional public comment? Ms. Dowdell, you are wanting another bite at the apple, if you can be succinct, please.
Yes, and these are all issues that were addressed by Bill, but we want to emphasize with regard to the Jaco Trail, legal access does not exist right now. If the bridge is county, the road is private. And what the Homeowners Association is suggesting is that this could be a mechanism for ensuring that that access becomes legal, so that, and the people who are there now have always allowed that kind of access to the Jaco Trail. But alls it takes is one change in ownership, and then the trouble will begin, and that access won't be guaranteed. So what Bill suggested was that this was a way in order to resolve that issue. And I believe in the transfer statutes, you have the ability to condition the transfer upon the homeowners doing something like providing that access. There was something else the last fellow said that I can't remember what I was going to address, but, oh, the Swan is not state land, it is not own, it is not navigable, it is not owned by the state, it's owned by the private property owners to the middle of the river. This is just one of those streams that isn't navigable.
Okay, thank you. Last chance. Okay, seeing no additional public comment, I'll close the public hearing. Is there discussion or questions from the Commission?
Sure. First, I'd just like to say that there seems to be some confusion, but all RSIDs are paid for, paying for public infrastructure based on benefit. So this is not unique. People in Lolo that are paying for that maintenance RSID, that is a public sewer and water system. So that's all around the county, that that's not unique. I think that, you know, we've kind of debated, we all have the same, want the same outcome. We're not debating the outcome, we're just how we get there. And I think that John outlined the best option. I would agree with Mr. Harris and the two gentlemen that represented the tribe, you know, it is in the public interest for this to be a public bridge. And we can't use, no matter which form of RSID, whether we went with the one John suggests or the more difficult one that Colleen suggests, or more lengthy to get there, it still needs to be for public infrastructure. And I think it's in the best interest for the public to continue to own that bridge. And I really appreciate all the work that Mr. Junkumare did preparing, I mean, I've got a big file that you provided with all the history. There were a lot of handshake things that happened a long time ago. I grew up in the Swan. The snowplow used to drive right to our house because we would take him out a cup of coffee, and it was a private road. You know, we don't do that kind of stuff anymore. Greg has done a lot to make sure that his department is following the law, not just the handshakes, and made it more professional. And things like having a weight limit on a bridge that can carry more weight than that is not right. So he took it off, and I agree with him. And most of you wouldn't have any concrete if you didn't, if you, you know, those trucks are heavy. So I am in favor of denying the petition and directing Greg and John to help us get to the RSID mechanism and expanding it to add the properties that benefit and take away the ones that don't, as was talked about earlier, so that we can all reach the common goal, I think, of making sure that that bridge is maintained, that it is in public ownership, recognizing that the road beyond is not public. But there is some prescriptive use, for sure, for that trail to the Jaco. So that, I don't think is argued and could probably be ratified in court. So I guess I'll see if anybody else has any comments before I am ready to make a motion if needed.
Okay. Additional discussion?
I agree. I think I heard a lot about, you know, what's in our authority and how would you set this up? And I think the lawyers can, can fight all day about that, and I trust John to do the research and figure out the best way that we can move forward with that. But really, what's before us today is if we are going to approve or deny transferring ownership of the bridge, and then how we're going to move forward from there. We, will be done through a public process of its own. But, but I agree that there is absolutely no public benefit of transferring ownership of a public asset.
John, do you have any initial thoughts on this secondary, not secondary, but different statute that pertains to creation of a maintenance district as opposed to utilizing the existing RSID for maintenance purposes?
Honestly, I don't, Commissioner. I did talk with, with Colleen this afternoon before the hearing, and she mentioned that this was a statutory provision that Mr. Junkumare might discuss and propose. And I've looked at the statute, and I've looked specifically at the subsection that talks about, you know, the 85%. And, and I mean honestly, you know, this is just reading it, but it, but it's solely for the purpose of road maintenance. And then the subsection goes on to talk about the property proposed must be located in a residential subdivision, except that the owner of property located out of a residential subdivision may consent to the inclusion of the property in the proposed district. You know, I'm not saying that that's, language is failing itself, but the first thing I think about is, well, is this a residential subdivision? Sure, the land's been subdivided, but I don't know what the definition of a residential subdivision is. Is that problematic? Maybe. Maybe not. And then, you know, how you get the property owners that aren't within that residential subdivision, assuming there is, to consent to be in it? It just, I mean, with all due respect to Mr. Junkumare and Ms. Dowdell, I just, when I read that, I think that this sounds like a more complicated way to skin the cat than what I came up with. And when we do, you know, we disagree that my proposal is as clear-cut as I think it is. But I think between the two, just, just looking at it, I think it's cleaner to go under the statutes that I talked about earlier. That was a little long-winded.
Nope. Thank you. Thank you for that response.
All right. Well, I would move that the Board of County Commissioners deny the petition to transfer the ownership of the bridge to the Lindbergh Lake Homeowners Association.
Second?
And I would just add right now, that I would concur. I don't see it within our authority to transfer the bridge to the HOA. Clearly not everyone within the RSID wants the bridge transferred to the HOA. And if at the end of the day, the main concern is to maintain the bridge, which I think there's widespread agreement that that is the goal, or at least a primary goal here, the other mechanisms that we have discussed earlier relative to utilizing the RSID can accomplish that. Any additional discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny the petition?
And then I'd just like to follow up, and I don't think it, I don't know that needs to be a motion here, but it can be, to make sure that then we direct staff, Greg and John in particular, to figure out the mechanism to do the RSID for maintenance, including properties that need to be included and taking out the ones that won't benefit, and also working into that an agreement that could be, because it can be done by contract, so the Homeowners Association could have, that we at least have something to consider, that they could, you know, they could make arrangements with contractors they wanted to, but it would need to have some supervision with Public Works to make sure it was done correctly.
I'm happy to do that. I'm going to assume, though, that that direction includes...
The statute you mentioned.
Well, or, no, not that, Commissioner, but, but to make sure that we involve Mr. Junkumare in the discussion, is that correct?
Right, to figure out the timeline, the mechanism, the how to notify people, all of that stuff.
Okay, yeah.
Do we need a formal motion to that effect, or is that clear enough? Okay.
I've got my marching orders.
Okay.
I think Ms. Dowdell had something to add? Or was that what you wanted to add?
I wanted to add that.
Ms. Dowdell, can you please come to the microphone, please?
I wanted to add to, involve the Homeowners Association, because that's what was anticipated for these last three months. And it was a big disappointment to get to hear and not even have talked about any of it. And, and I sort of cut my teeth on public law under Anne Marie Doucet, who was the queen of public process. And she taught me a lot about it. And I would just ask that you exercise some of that with this group, because they are, they have lots of good ideas, lots of energy.
So John, do we have assurance the Homeowners Association will be involved?
Yeah, especially if they invite me up this summer on a hot afternoon when they're having a meeting.
Okay.
And a beer.
And, well, yeah. I mean, probably not, not on official time, Commissioner.
All right. Well, thank, thank you. We do have a path forward. Thanks for everyone's participation. It's been a long, multi-decade journey, but hopefully we're coming to some resolution here. So thank you all. Okay, we still have three public hearings left today. You all can still stay, even if you're interested in Lindbergh Lake. It's still exciting. So our next one is a public hearing on Country Crest Number 3B, Lot 64 subdivision, and we have a staff report from Casey Drayton.
All right, Casey Drayton here with Community and Planning Services to present the Country Crest Number 3B, Lot 64, two-lot minor subdivision. The applicant for the subdivision and property owners are Nikki and Brenda Cogar, and they're represented by WGM Group. Nick Kaufman here with us today. This is a minor subdivision, so this is the one and only public hearing, February 22nd. There was no planning board hearing on the minor subdivision. This request is located just north of Mullen Road in the Country Crest subdivision. It's been sort of a running, working of subdivisions out there, commonly known as Country Crest. This particular property is located off Grassland Drive. Grassland Drive has two entrances or exits off of Mullen Road, as you can see on the map there. Looking closer at the existing conditions of the site, we have one single-family dwelling located to the north portion of the lot. The remainder of it appears to be primarily vacant. Around the existing residential development, we have some just pretty standard domestic landscaping. And this photo here speaks to that pretty well. Relatively flat property, not many topographical concerns here, with Grassland Drive showing down in the bottom left of the screen. Looking at the growth policy and zoning applicable to this property, we're in the 2005 Y-Mullen West Plan area, which calls out residential two-dwelling units per acre on this property, which also matches up pretty well with our CR2 zoning designation, primarily a single-family residential zoning district with up to two dwelling units per acre. This will show you the Country Crest Number 3B plat. This would be the underlying plat for this subdivision proposal. I've highlighted in red the Lot 64 that we're looking at here today. You can see on there that it looks like there's almost a potential split there, that the future lot splits were contemplated with Country Crest Number 3B. You can see most of the lots that were greater than one acre in size had an anticipated future lot split to help guide homeowners towards putting a house on one half of that lot, so that they could later come back and split them. And that's what we're looking at here today, with maybe a slight modification where that lot line is actually showing through the middle of this property. The property's just under 1.4 acres in size, and what is proposed in front of us, like I said, almost mirrors what we just saw there. This would be a two-lot minor subdivision. We would end up with Lot 64A and Lot 64B. Lot 64A would be .78 acres, Lot 64B would be .59 acres. The existing single-family dwelling is shown here with its driveway and access off Grassland Drive. Lot 64B would likely have an access right off Grassland Drive with the driveway shooting straight in to a proposed residential home there. Handful of easements around the property that we can get to and some findings and conclusions, but other than that, it's fairly straightforward. We can always jump back to it if there's any questions on it. Looking at the review criteria for this subdivision request, I'll run through these just as quickly as possible. But as noted in the zoning and growth policy compliance that I touched on briefly, this is a two-lot subdivision on 1.37 acres, so it is compliant with that maximum of two dwelling units per acre. The only other zoning standard that would really be applicable with this subdivision request is the minimum lot width. In the CR2 district, that's a 100-foot minimum, measured at the front setback. This property, Lot 64B, would have 135-foot front minimum lot width measurement. Any development on Lot 64B will be reviewed for zoning compliance at time of building permit review. The applicable amendment to the Missoula County Growth Policy, as mentioned, is the '05 Y-Mullen West Comprehensive Plan. The land use designation, again, as mentioned, is two dwelling units per acre. That plan as well, actually contemplated what we see on the Country Crest 3B plat. It goes to say that it's recommended to locate building footprints to one side of a lot in anticipation of potential future lot splits for lots one acre or greater. So the comprehensive plan actually recommended exactly what we're looking at here today. When we look to agriculture and agricultural water user facilities, agriculture is clearly absent from the site and all surrounding properties. This is a residential neighborhood. Soils on the property are grass, valleys, silty clay, loam, 0% to 4% slopes, which is considered farmland of local importance. However, it's unlikely that this small tract could ever be farmed, and considering there's no agriculture around it, it's not likely that it would be rolled in as part of a larger agricultural enterprise. There's no ag-water user facilities located on the property, therefore, we find that there are no impacts to ag or ag-water user facilities resulting from this request. When we look to local services, we'll start by looking at the roads. Grassland Drive is a 25-foot wide off-site road within a 60-foot public access easement, meeting county standards for roads. No onsite roads are proposed. The developer will need to contribute funds to support improvements to intersections at Mullen, Flynn, and Mullen Reserve if the conditions of approval, as the staff has set forth, are approved. The Y-Mullen Plan recommends that transit should be a major consideration in proposals for new development, and that the Missoula Urban Transportation District should review new development for inclusion in the district. The district did take a look at this subdivision, noted they had no concerns. It's my guess that there were no concerns, because the covenants require that the property owners petition to have the parcels included in the district. Some little of that petition, as offered up by the developer, is a final plat checklist item, to make sure that they have done that prior to final plat review. No pedestrian facilities are proposed or required in this minor subdivision. Looking at water and sanitation, Lot 64A is served by an existing well. Lot 64B has a new proposed well. Well testing in Country Crest is showing favorable quantity and quality, which exceed DEQ standards in many cases. Lot 64A will continue to be served by existing connection to city sewer. Lot 64B is proposed to connect through an existing stub found on the property. County Public Works commented that the subdivision is subject to RSID 8464 established by Resolution 2004-132. That RSID was established to collect funds for improvement and extension of sewer infrastructure to allow the lots within the district to connect to the municipal sewer service treatment facility. As much as I'm sure we don't want to hear more about RSIDs, it is a recommended condition of approval for this subdivision. No park or common space is proposed or required in this minor subdivision. Parkland was dedicated in the original Country Crest plating, so there is parkland in the near vicinity. Fire hazard assessment for the subdivision returned a hazard rating found to be less than moderate, so a very low fire hazard rating here. And that's mainly given the fact that this is a primarily developed area, residential subdivision. Missouri Rail Fire serves the property and has a station less than two miles away. The covenants include appropriate language to notify future lot owners of the requirement for fire sprinklers as the chosen method for fire suppression. Look at effects on the natural environment, wildlife, and wildlife habitat. Look at effects on the natural environment, wildlife and wildlife habitat. The site's located in a developed area, again, and appears to offer little wildlife habitat. The subdivision site is maintained. Disturbance can be expected, though, following development of Lot 64B, which leads us to a recommended condition of approval for a revegetation plan for the disturbed site. We look at public health and safety. The property does not contain any designated floodplain areas. Nothing in the subdivision is classified as steep slopes. The subdivision's outside the airport influence area. The City-County Health Department did recommend that a section on radon mitigation be added to the covenants. That is a recommended condition of approval, and a provision of the covenants notifies lot owners of the Missoula City-County Air Pollution Control Program and the prohibitions within primarily relating to wood burning stoves. Other than that, we found it is compliant with survey requirements, subdivision regs and review procedures. One note on easements and utilities, there is an easement that was underlying on the Country Crest 3B plat that was only 15 feet in width. Our subdivision regulations today require easements to be 20 feet in width, so a recommended condition of approval is that they add an additional five feet to that shown on the final plat, which would be subject to our review prior to final plat approval, just to get them up to that 20 feet. We've talked about this with WGM Group, and they were comfortable with that direction. So, with that said, there are nine recommended conditions of subdivision approval, and CAPS is recommending approval of the Country Crest number 3B, Lot 64 subdivision, subject to those conditions. That concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Casey. Applicant or applicant's representative? Mr. Kaufman?
For the record, my name is Nick Kaufman. Thank you, Commissioners. I forgot to thank you when I was up here before. In fact, I didn't think I was going to testify before. This subdivision shows you what can happen when teamwork happens. So, city and county, because of future city sewer, but initially drain fields and wells. Instead of one-acre tracks, it typically looked like that. I designed this one so it looked like that, so I could have two building sites. Country Crest basically now has twice the home sites it had when it was originally approved by the Missoula County Commissioners. Same amount of road, twice utilization, more economical for school buses and everything. You did this subdivision in three months. The best time I've ever had on a subdivision, Casey, is six months, and I want to tell you that it was a joy having my staff work with you. You and I didn't share 100 words in the whole process, but they were only words that were necessary. So, County Commissioner, I want you to know, from someone who's been doing this for decades, that the process is improving, the design of subdivisions is improving, and the implementation of the teamwork that we envisioned and worked together on for Country Crest is now implemented. Thank you. And by the way, that portion of my tax bill that goes to your salaries after watching you today, I pay gladly. Thank you.
Okay, we got that on the record. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? This is a public hearing. Okay, seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the Commission?
I think this is really straightforward and worked the way it was supposed to work, so, and congratulations on beating the new fastest subdivision record, Casey. So, did you have anything, Jean, or I'm ready to? So, with that, I move that the Country Crest number 3B, Lot 64 subdivision, be approved based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
So, quickly, I can spit them out?
Okay, our next item is a public hearing on Still Waters on the Clark Fork number three, condition amendment. And we have a staff report from Jamie Erbacher.
All right, thank you. Whoop, there we go. So, this is a request from Mike Wheelahan with DJ&amp;A on behalf of Free Stone LLC to amend the condition of approval related to the weed management plan for Still Waters on the Clark Fork number three. Still Waters number three is a 71-lot residential subdivision approved on July 15th of 2005. Still Waters on the Clark Fork number three was part of two other subdivisions, which included Still Waters on the Clark Fork number one and Still Waters on the Clark Fork number two. Still Waters number one is a five-lot subdivision, which was approved on August 13th of 2003 and filed on January 12th of 2004. Still Waters number two is a 20-lot subdivision, split into four phases, that was approved on November 5th of 2003, with the last phase being filed on June 13th of 2017. The most recent phasing plan for Still Waters on the Clark Fork number three was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on February 3rd of 2014. As part of that phasing plan approval, a weed management plan was to be recorded by May 15th of 2014, and the initiation of that plan and implementation and progress on the implementation was to be verified by July 15th of 2014. Unfortunately, the plan was not implemented, and now the developer is requesting to extend the original dates of the plan to spring and summer of 2018. Again, just to be clear, this is a request, this request only involves the extension and implementation of the weed management plan as part of a condition amendment. No phases of the subdivision are proposed for extension. So, as part of a condition amendment, we must find that the request complies with the following nine criteria. The request must be minor in nature. It must still comply with the subdivision regulations, and the amendment may not reduce the protection or safeguards provided by the requirement. The amendment cannot create any new impacts to the area and must remain compliant with the growth policy and findings of fact from the subdivision. It cannot be a series of incremental requests, nor can it change the area proposed for the subdivision or be economically driven. So, staff reviewed these nine criteria and found that the request is minor in nature. It consists with the original approval and findings for the condition. It meets the original intent and will not be seen as a violation of the regulations, nor will the request be viewed as economically driven or a proposal that would result in a series of requested amendments. No new impacts will be generated with this request, and in fact, will hopefully assist neighboring properties with their weed management. As required by the November 2016 subdivision regulations, we published a legal ad in the Missoulian on January 21st of 2018, notified adjacent property owners and the Still Waters Homeowners Association, all by certified mail, and we also notified multiple county agencies. The weed district reviewed the weed management plan and only had a few minor changes for DJ&amp;A to make. The only response we received from adjoining property owners was from Adam Hertz, and he was not for or against the request, just rather wanted us to make sure that we considered House Bill 445. And House Bill 445 amended Montana Code Annotated Sections 76.3, 102, 103, and 76.8, 101 with regards to newly approved phased subdivisions and extensions for such. Since this is not a request for a new phased subdivision, it does not apply nor have any effect on this request. This request was taken before the planning board on February 6th, where they recommended approval. Planning board did ask who manages the weeds currently, and the applicant's representative responded and said, "Nothing is currently being done right now," and the land is still being, it is still in cultivated crop area, as it has been since 2013. And this is a view looking at that site from Mullen Road. Yes, to the left. Planning board also asked staff if the applicant needed an extension for the subdivision. Could it be granted? Staff responded and said, "Under the proposed condition, an extension would not be granted if the weed management plan was not implemented." However, if implemented, they could ask for extension in three-year incremental windows. The last question Planning Board had for staff was regarding the proposed deletion of some of the language in the condition. In response, staff commented that the proposed language reflects regulations in place today. There used to be several check-ins required, and the weed district didn't feel that they were necessary, so the proposed condition reflects those changes in today's regulations. Based on these facts, staff's recommending approval to modify the condition as proposed on the screen. As you see, it includes date amendments to reflect the 2018 calendar year and additional language that states no additional phasing plan extensions will be approved if the plan is not implemented as required.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or applicant's representative here? Come on up.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Wheelahan with DJ&amp;A, and I'm newer to this project. It's got a huge history, as you know, phase one and two and three and 13-plus years of development and subdivision process, and I've had on my desk, I got it five months ago, so, just as a preface, I'd ask you to consider approving this for a few reasons. In addition to it's not violating any law, Planning Board approved it, CAPS is approving it, but also on behalf of the developer, a lot of time and effort and finances has gone into these three phases of the subdivision. Also, when I was meeting with Bryce, the weed district manager on site, we noticed some white top out there, which is a species of concern, so if we didn't do the plan, that would just continue to spread. And I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're up there at the mic, so, what again is the reason why the weed management plan was not originally implemented?
Simply put, oversight. The developer had a partner at the time, 2005, and they ended up at odds and split, and things got complicated. He was in a lawsuit, which precipitated this phasing amendment. It changed engineering hands, came to us. I wasn't even at the firm at the time. The engineer is my coworker, Paul Driestein, and he didn't see it, the owner didn't see it, and we kind of dropped the ball. But we want to be proactive now and get it done.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, which I think I forgot to open, but it is open, so any additional public comment on this item? Okay, the crowd has thinned. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Questions or discussion by the Commission?
I just have one question. Jamie, do you want us to read this into the? Sarah wants us to read it into the.
Sarah says yes.
So, the other I was thinking, as you were reading and knowing how much Sarah types, is all that stuff you just read, you could probably send to her in a Word document.
I do before I come.
I would move that the request for the condition amendment be approved based on the finding of fact and conclusions presented by staff. The condition would be amended to read. The development covenant shall be amended, or a development agreement shall be filed to include a weed management plan, parentheses, "plan," for the common area and all undeveloped and unsold lots of the subdivision to be submitted for review and approval by the county weed district and planning office. The approved plan shall be filed with the county clerk and recorder by May 15th, 2018, and shall include provisions to make the developer responsible for its implementation for the common area, the undeveloped lots, and the unsold lots, subject to review and approval by the planning office. Once enough development has occurred to support the homeowners association, the HOA, the HOA shall assume responsibility for weed management in the common area. The plan shall include a mechanism allowing the homeowners association to assume weed duties for the common area from the developer, while the developer remains responsible for all undeveloped lots and unsold lots, continuing after all phases of the subdivision have been filed. The developer shall start implementation of the plan and the covenant provisions related to the weed management no later than June 15th, 2018. If the plan is not implemented as required above, no additional phasing plan extension shall be approved for this subdivision. What is the date in? Oh, November 14th, 2016. Why is that in there?
That's just a citation from the regulations.
Citation from the regulations is November 14th, 2016, subdivision regulations 3.7.12.
That motion is in order.
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion on this item? All those.
Should I repeat the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, please do. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Sherwood gets the last two in the audience.
Yes, you held out here. So, our fifth and final public hearing, which will open, is for a building for lease or rent review, phase two mini warehouse development out along Mullen Road near Frenchtown. Jamie, staff report.
Thank you, Dave. All right, so as you mentioned, Buildings for Lease or Rent proposal from Frenchtown Valley View Trailer Park, represented by George Sherwood and his wife Donna, to build seven new mini warehouse buildings, which will include 114 new units. The development will span two parcels that total 9.31 acres in size. The property was approved for 103 mini warehouse units in four buildings under the Buildings for Lease or Rent regulations on April 8th of 2015. In addition to these buildings, there is a 23-unit mobile home park and a detached shop on the property. The property is located near Frenchtown off of Mullen Road and access, or, excuse me, and across the street from the Emerald Estates subdivision, which is in the process of filing phase one currently. The governing body is charged with reviewing five criteria under the Buildings for Lease or Rent regulations. They include compatibility with these regulations and other applicable regulations that the project avoids or minimizes potential impacts to the environment and human population in the area, that adequate water, wastewater, solid facilities, access, and emergency services are available or provided at the site, and lastly, that the project complies with the floodplain regulations. So, staff has gone through the application and applied all applicable exemptions to the development, but because there is more than 30 mini warehouse units, and those units are contained in more than three buildings, Buildings for Lease or Rent review is triggered. This site is completely outside of the 100-year floodplain, and the floodplain administrator saw no issue with the proposed development. The water quality district requested a drainage plan, which the applicant submitted on January 9th. The drainage plan was approved as presented above. You will see that the square pumps, they were in place with, I guess the squares that are around the pumps, they were in place with phase one, and the ones that are circled, those are proposed with phase two. Public Works will require a building permit for all new buildings and any fence over eight feet tall, and a condition has been recommended by staff noting the need for building permits. The property is accessed off of Mullen Road. The applicant has stated that he intends to move the access gate 10 feet farther into the property than it is right now. I spoke with Glenn Cameron from MDT, and he has no issues with this. The development will be fully fenced, as shown in the blue. Where fencing is not provided, the mini warehouse buildings themselves will act as a fence. The property is relatively flat where the construction is proposed. However, there is a significant slope break toward the rear of the property leading down to the lagoon. The applicant is proposing to be 20-plus feet back from this slope break. The lagoon and five septic systems serve the existing trailer park. There's also two wells that serve the trailer park. Since the applicant's not proposing an office with this development, no additional water or wastewater services are required. Frenchtown Fire is approximately a mile and a half from the site, and they, along with the county sheriff's office, will serve this development if the need arises. We did send this request out to all adjacent landowners to see if there were any additional impacts they were concerned with, and received no comment. So, based on the findings as I presented, staff finds the proposed expansion compliant with the regulations as presented and is recommending approval as noted above, subject to the two conditions. The only thing I did not note earlier is that there was a revised site plan that George submitted, and that reduced the number of units from 117, which was in his application, down to 114, and it moved Building 11 to the west to allow for mobile homes to be moved in and out of the park. The revised site plan was included as an attachment to the staff report and depicted on the screen in the previous slide.
Thank you. Mr. Sherwood, would you like to say anything? Okay, that was a no from Mr. George Sherwood. Could you come up to the mic? Sorry to inconvenience you. Okay.
Jamie mentioned, I don't know if this is true or not, you heard the folks that I applied for a handicap sticker? Is that true?
I don't know.
That's all I got to say. Thank you.
You can do that, you have to do it through the Department of Motor Vehicles.
There we go, okay. And that was George Sherwood at the mic. So, okay. We do not have any other public in the audience right now, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any discussion or questions from the Commission or motion?
Just out of curiosity, where are the septics for the trailers located? Presumably not under the storage units.
George, she was asking where the septics are at for the trailers.
Oh, yeah. There's more trailers. You don't see them, but they're at the upper end.
If I can.
There you go. If you look to the upper end up there, the narrow area, there's about four or five trailers. They have their own septics.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And the others are served by this lagoon?
That's correct. The lagoon's been there since 1955. Never failed.
Even though it says pond, we don't allow fishing or swimming, right?
I've been fishing there. It hasn't been that bad, actually. They kind of glow in the dark when you get them. Yeah. I would say something, you know, I didn't plan to come back here in less than two years, but you know, the way the economy's going and the way Frenchtown's going, you know, I have a real estate office, and it kind of all comes together because what people want, they want to come and buy real estate, and then they want to put their stuff in mini warehouses, and then they want to rent, because I have a property management company. So all three of them just kind of flow together. With all of them together, they just feed off each other. It's kind of an interesting concept, but it works wonderful. Because if you had that mini warehouse complex where it's at, you would never rent a mini warehouse. But it all comes out of my office, and it just works wonderful. I love it. So that's why I'm back. I'm filling it up, so.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, could you flash the motions? Yeah, there we go.
I move that the phase two Buildings for Lease or Rent project at 15 to 67 Mullen Road, as shown on the revised site plan, be approved based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law found in the staff report, subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, a land use permit shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Office prior to construction of the Buildings for Lease or Rent. The Buildings shall be in substantial compliance with the plan submitted in the applicant packet. And number two, a building permit for all new Buildings shall be reviewed and approved by County Public Works Department prior to construction of the Buildings for Lease or Rent.
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, that passes. Thank you.
Enjoy your storage units.
That was our final public hearing of the day. Is there any other business that we need to attend to? Seeing none, we will be in recess. Thank you.